Good afternoon, everyone. It's twelve forty-two. I'll open the Environment and Sustainability Committee Meeting Number Eight of two thousand and twenty-one, on the second of September. Note, all committee members are in attendance. Are there any declarations of interested matters on the agenda?
I'd just like to, with the purpose of the live stream, make it clear that councillor Fekner and I are appointed to the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust by the council. So, we're not, we're just being very open about that. But, under the guidelines and legislation and all of that framework, it's, it's not a declarable conflict or anything like that because we're appointed to represent council by council resolution.
Thank you, councillor Madsen. Thank you for the openness. And that is with respect to item three on the agenda, Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two Annual Precept. Any other members of committee? No? Then, we'll do confirmation of minutes. The confirmation of minutes of the Environment and Sustainability Committee Meeting Number Seven of two thousand and twenty-one on the fifth of August. Do I have a mover? Councillor Fekner, a seconda? Mayor Harding? Are there, is there any discussion from the minutes? Or business arising? No? Then I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item two is Traditional Owner Reference Group. Does any member of committee wish to ask questions of the responsible officer? No? The recommendation is two parts: A, that council endorse the formation of the Traditional Owner Reference Group as detailed in the draft terms of reference outlined in Attachment One. And B, that council endorse the proposed structure of the roles, relationships and responsibilities for the Traditional Owner Reference Group, council and the native title party as defined in Attachment Three. To start discussion, do I have a mover? Councillor Fekner, a seconda? Councillor Madsen? I'll open the matter for discussion. Mayor?
Oh, sorry. I guess Chair has asked that one of the things in the, in these terms of reference is that the chair and deputy chair of this particular reference group is nominated by, by this committee? Well, it says Environment Committee. I'm guessing it should be Environment Sustainability Committee. So, if, if resolved, yes.
So, we're on page eighteen for visibility here. The mayor refers to the membership section, a chairperson, comma, as nominated by the Environment and Sustainability Committee. We'll make that amendment there.
Oh, was Milligan just part of the discussion was just Milligan highlighting that at some stage we'll need to nominate a chair and deputy chair?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, Chair.
So...
No, that's fine, councillor Milligan. I think we could work with them to correct the minutes and have it ready for council ordinary.
So, that'll be...
Sorry, Chair, if I can, I'm not asking for a correction. I'm just making a comment.
Yeah.
I'm not asking for anything else to be done. I'm just highlighting that we need to turn our minds to that this committee will be nominating a chair and a deputy chair of this reference group.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Through you, Chair, if I may. I just want to thank Ms. Tina Longford for the many, many hours that she's put into getting this group together. It's taken more than possibly two years, I believe, to get this up and running. We had an amazing workshop where we went through how this group was formulated, what it's intending to be, and how it fits into council structure in terms of groups that we consult with. We landed on a position where we, we recognise this group isn't your regular CRG. It kind of sits outside of that and one that is really important to us. So, I, I just want to really sincerely thank Ms. Tina Longford for her work getting this group together. And I speak in favour of these recommendations to adopt and endorse the formation of this group moving forward and really look forward to hearing back to see how, how they're, how this particular Traditional Owners Reference Group is going and what their input to us and how they can help inform our decision-making. You know, I, I just look forward to that. So, it can't be understated that this is a huge piece of work that's taken a long time to get off the ground and we thank Ms. Tina Longford for that.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you, councillor Fekner. I think all of committee agree that Tina Longford in her role as a native title and cultural heritage officer has absolutely gone the extra yards and the, and the distance to arrive at where we are today to be able to move forward. Any further discussion? If not, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? It's unanimous and carried. Item three is Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two Annual Precept. The recommendation is two parts: A, that council negotiate with the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust to agree on an alternative sum for their twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two precept for a reduced works programme this year. And B, that council work in partnership with the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust to develop an agreed three-to-five-year works programme and funding model. Any member of committee wish to ask questions of the responsible council officer? No? Then I'll, to open debate, I'll ask for a mover? Councillor Fekner, a seconda? Mayor Harding? I'll open the matter for discussion.
You, Chair, and as a member of the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust, it should be noted that in our discussions with the trust, this was very much a, this was very much a, a willingness to have open dialogue with Ipswich City Council. Under the Act, there are powers that the trust can actually demand the precept be honoured. But rather, the trust has taken an approach where, you know, they've, they've submitted the works programme. We've been able to scrutinise that, or at least council officers have. We've got the report in front of us with all of that detailed information on it. But I just want to highlight that these recommendations, these recommendations are very consistent with the approach that councillor Madsen and I both really wanted to take when we became members of the trust. We wanted to ensure good collaboration between the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust and the great work that we do in, within the environmental arm of this organisation as well. And to make sure that those works complement each other to maximise the benefit for the local environment. So, I just, I just want to say that, that, that is definitely our intention. And when we meet with the trust, we're trying to formulate ideas that identify those synergies that we're able to have between the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust and the work that we already do here in council. A lot has happened. Councillor Madsen and I have been on a bit of a learning experience with the trust. And in the eyes of the state government, lots has changed as well. Where the trust, where, where the trust once had opportunity to apply for monies that councils couldn't otherwise do, couldn't otherwise apply for, we're now almost in competition with them in some regards in, in those competitive grants that come from the state government. So, I just want to reiterate my commitment to ensuring that the trust and council have aligned views on, on how we operate and what works we do to improve the local environment.
Thank you, councillor Fekner. Yes, I, I must agree in that it, it is the collaboration between the two entities and, and if possible, the alignment, and particularly with the funding model that is legislated, that we do come to that agreeance. Councillor Madsen, would you like to add anything further?
Yes, Chair, I would. I'd just say that there's a pretty, adding to what councillor Fekner's already said, there's a pretty clear impression from, at all of those meetings, everybody present wants healthier waterways in Ipswich. They're a good group to work with. I'd just point out that the precept hasn't increased for a number of years. It isn't even indexed. So, there's, there's some issues in regards to ongoing funding arrangements. But as councillor Fekner pointed out, perhaps council can be in competition with the trust at times. So, if we have some strategic alignment and a clearer idea of who's going to do what and what that relationship is going to be moving forward, that could be a, a lot more efficient.
Yes, so, of course, from, i- if the recommendation is adopted and then, of course, resolved at the ordinary meeting, then those discussions will take place and hopefully we can move forward while it'll be assessed, depending on the decision there.
Through you, Chair. I'd just clarify that a lot of the works programme revolves around currently. At, at one point in time, it was about the impacts of floods on the waterways and erosion control and those sorts of things. The focus is more shifted to nowadays to being weed removal and revegetation with native species, which is all pretty cool stuff. But council does some of that work as well. So, that's the duplication that I was referring to. Thank you.
Any further discussion? No? Then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? It's unanimous and carried. Item four is Natural Environment Policy. This is a report concerning Ipswich City Council's natural environment policy. The policy has been developed to fill a policy gap extensive internal and external. Consultation was undertaken when developing the policy. The recommendation is that the policy titled Natural Environment Policy, as detailed in Attachment One, be adopted. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions of the appropriate officer? No? Sorry? No?
Mr. Tabullo, if I may? I was unsure if Mr. Tabullo was in the audience. I beg your pardon, Chair.
Peter Tabullo, General Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services.
I did foreshadow this discussion earlier in the day when we were talking about the timing of the new planning scheme. If council chooses to resolve and adopt the natural environment policy next week, or indeed if this committee ends up recommending it today, what implications will that have on the build of the new planning scheme?
So, councillor, the elements within the policy that have application to land use will, will be reflected either by words or by mapping within the planning scheme document.
Yep. Because I just, I note in the report that there was, there were some internal discussions around what this policy means for council, how it will work, why is it not working? And there was a line of questioning that was, that came out here for the committee. It's page one forty-three of our agenda pack, page fifteen of the actual policy itself. Why is it not working well enough? And then there's a subsection that says conflicting direction and planning, which then goes on to say the city's planning scheme should support and assist in facilitating the conservation and environmental outcomes of the city. Are we well placed and well informed to actually incorporate that thinking into our new planning scheme?
I believe so.
Do we have enough time to use this to build really good policies to sit behind the planning scheme to ensure we do achieve that outcome?
I, I believe so, councillor. And, and the wording you used there in terms of sitting behind the planning scheme is, is a crucial element of it. The, the policy doesn't have to be reflected chapter and verse within the planning scheme, but it is a document that can be called up either by referencing, referencing it specifically by name or directing a reader or someone using the scheme to the policy to reference it for development assessment.
Yep. And to date, have, has there been much alignment between Planning and Regulatory Services and Infrastructure and Environment Department, particularly the environmental of the business when it comes to informing some of those policies that we, that we need to create to, to really inform the planning scheme to ensure...
There, there has, councillor. There's been, there's been a series of meetings at a working group level about the, the construct of the scheme and what's required from not only the environment section of the Infrastructure and Environment Department, but from the transport area and the, the traffic area and those type of, of sections.
Okay. Thank you.
To enable discussion, I'll ask for a mover?
I'll move.
Councillor Fekner and a seconda? Mayor Harding? I'll open the matter for discussion. Mayor Harding?
Thank you. I think this is a, a great step forward for us as, as a community, as a council. You know, this came about as part of our I-Future corporate plan under the theme of, you know, to have a sustainable, you know, a livable community. And I note that this is, when I look at the policy, it's, it's version one. So, it's the first time that this council's had a natural environment policy. So, I think it's a great first step in establishing that broader policy framework that, that sets council's direction. And, and I think it's a really good way to modernise our, our broader approach, bring our practices up to date and to inform other works such as the planning scheme. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Absolutely. Then, if council resolves to adopt the policy, then of, of course, the, the organisation would then be directed in, in those directions, particularly with the, our I-Future theme, natural and sustainable. Councillor Fekner?
Yeah, thanks, councillor Milligan. Natural and sustainable is the, is the pillar of I-Future you're looking for there, Mayor. It's a, this is a pretty big step forward for our council. You know, as, as Mayor stated earlier that this is version one. It's a really important step forward. It's one that I'm super passionate about as a councillor. But, you know, with word of caution, we read so many, on so many occasions in this report, this very detailed report given to us today, council is committed to conserve, protect, restore, you know, the environment, you know? And that language is used very strongly throughout. So, I think that as the policy owners, yes, infrastructure and environment have a big part to play in this. But everybody across the organisation needs to get around this. And, and, and as reflected in Mr. Tabullo's answers to my questions, they, they have been engaging officers across the organisation. And I implore Mr. Tabullo and his team in building the new planning scheme to keep this really important dialogue open with them. This is the single biggest piece of work we will do is building the planning scheme. If we adopt this policy, we take a firm position about where we want to be in terms of protecting the environment. So, I just, I really want to drive and, and, and be on the forefront of this. Because if we're not, this policy will mean nothing for future generations to come. So, I just want, I just wanted to foreshadow for the entire committee here. And I'll be doing the same at council ordinary. I speak in favour of this and I speak to its absolute importance. I mean, look at how detailed this was. Look at the community consultation that happened within the development of this policy. We went out and it's not just a group of people. It's not just internally. It's not just the greenies saying this. Our entire city wants to get behind this policy. There are lots of really beautiful, wonderful comments that come from our community because they want better environmental outcomes. And we can't let them down.
Thank you, councillor Fekner. That's very well stated. Any other member of committee like to speak on the matter? No? In that case, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? And it's unanimous and carried. Item five is Ipswich Platypus E-DNA Monitoring Report for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. This is a report concerning the results of Ipswich City Council's two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one Platypus E-DNA Environmental DNA Monitoring Programme. The sampling represents the fifth and most extensive platypus monitoring event council has undertaken across the city's waterways. The recommendation is in three parts. A, that the Platypus E-DNA Monitoring Programme be continued annually to monitor the city's existing populations as well as transient individuals moving through systems, pardon me, throughout systems. B, that habitat protection and environment be conducted around key strongholds such as the Wuguru, Sandy and Opossum Creek catchments to ensure the long-term sustainability of these populations. And C, that detailed habitat assessments be undertaken to identify areas of high-quality habitat and better understand key threats to platypus sustainability. Does any member of committee wish to ask questions of the responsible council officer? No? Then to enable discussion, I'll ask for a mover? Councillor Fekner, a seconda? Councillor Madsen? I'll open the matter for discussion. Mayor Harding?
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I don't think we decided on a clip plural. We saw this before. Look, I think this continues to be really good news for our city. It's great to see that the platypuses, platypai? Platypoda? Right, well, let's move on. The colonies of platypus continue to persist in comparatively urban areas when you look at it. And also in close proximity to, you know, in our eastern suburbs, close to Brisbane as well. So, I think the map of the survey locations on, on one ninety of our papers was, is, is great to see. And also to see that platypus in close proximity to Springfield still with us, you know, after decades of, of development in that region. So, I think it's really great and probably, we're probably in a really unique situation here in Ipswich too to have such, to have a knowledge of this, but also have, have that platypai, platypoda, platypuses growing in Ipswich and breeding.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that was the, the very first thing that hit my eye was when looking at the, at the map geographically. The report shows existence in, in those developed urban areas as opposed to further up in the, in, in the catchments, in, in the western areas where you uninformedly would assume you would, you would find traces. But it is great that council's officers have undertaken the work to, to define the results. Councillor Fekner?
I just want to add my support for this programme and its continuation. I get sent cute text messages of videos of the platypoda playing down in Wuguru from some really committed community environmental heroes that, that operate down in the eastern suburbs. And it's very exciting to see that. I personally haven't seen any firsthand. But I just want to say that council undertaking this work, I think, you know, if, if we look to inform the people and culture strategy, wow, what a job that you might end up with. Employer of choice. This, this is something that, that could excite school students, particularly primary school students who have a particular affinity to the environment and, and saving national treasures like the wonderful platypoda that exists across our city. You know, to, to kind of encourage doing something different, finding a, a new path. You know, you can mix your love for the environment with an employment opportunity as well. So, I think that this goes a long way to suggesting that there are professions out there where we can inspire our young kids to A, care about the environment more and B, follow their passion for that as well. So, yeah, thank you for the report. I speak in favour of its, the continuation of this programme.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor Fekner. Any other member wish to speak? No? Then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Item six is Stormwater Quality Offset Programme Annual Report. This is a report concerning the Stormwater Quality Offsets Programme status from commencement until June, two thousand and twenty-one. It consists of an overview of the programme's rules, list of water quality improvement projects delivered to date, including expenditure, liability, efficiency and most recent implementation plan review. The recommendation is that the Ipswich City Council Stormwater Quality Offset Programme Annual Update Report be received and the contents noted. Does any member of committee wish to speak or ask questions of the appropriate council officer? No? To open discussion, I'll ask for a mover? Councillor Fekner, a seconda? Mayor Harding? I'll open the matter for discussion. There being no discussion? Oh, oh, pardon me? Mayor Harding?
Sorry, I just want to highlight because it's some great work here and I think it's really important to show the progress that, that we're, we're doing in our community. On the, in the executive summary of the actual report on page two, two, three, I think it's really interesting to see that to the end of the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one financial year, council's received in excess of nineteen point eight million dollars in, of contributions and have accrued obligations to remove three hundred and forty-six tonnes of suspended sediment, one thousand seven hundred and thirteen kilograms of nitrogen and over five hundred and four kilograms of phosphorus from our stormwater annually. It's quite a phenomenal figure and I think it's, it's great progress.
Thank you, Mayor, for, for highlighting that. They are astonishing numbers. Any other member wish to speak with regards to the item? No? In that case, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? It's unanimous and carried. Item seven is Disability Inclusive Disaster Risk Reduction Project. This is a report concerning the Disability Inclusive Disaster Risk Reduction Project undertaken by council throughout two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one. The recommendation is that the report be received and the contents noted. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No? Then I'll ask for a mover? Mayor Harding, a seconda? Councillor Kunsman? I'll open the matter for discussion. Mayor Harding?
Thank you. As the, the Chair of the Local Disaster Management Group, this was a, a big, not so big, an important achievement for us. You know, we know disaster does, does strike and certainly what's come out of the last few floods is that people with disabilities are really up against it when there's, when, when there's a disaster. So, I think it was great with the workshops that council attended and co-facilitated with different groups. And I think, and I know from speaking to many of the participants in that and, and other parts of our community, they're really appreciative of this, the creation of a Disability Inclusive Disaster Risk Reduction page on, on our website. Just having that handy information for people who, you know, in, in planning for a disaster and during a disaster.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councillor Kunsman?
I'd just like to support this and being very aware that it's come, that's arisen from the community, not, not so much from us, but more from the community. And that we've had significant consultation with the community and the disability community. That's all. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor Kunsman. Any, any other member of committee wish to? Then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? It's unanimous and carried. Item eight is Get Ready Queensland Week, two thousand and twenty-one. This is a report concerning Get Ready Queensland Week in October, two thousand and twenty-one and the community education, awareness and engagement activities that council will carry out in support of the initiative. The recommendation is that the report be received and the contents noted. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No? I'll ask for a mover? Mayor Harding, a seconda? Councillor Kunsman? Open the matter for discussion. Any member of committee wishes to speak to it? Then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Item nine is Deputy Chairpersons for the Local Disaster Management Group and the Local Recovery and Resilience Group. This is a report concerning the appointment of an additional deputy chairperson to the City of Ipswich Local Disaster Management Group and a deputy chairperson to the City of Ipswich Local Recovery and Resilience Group. Recommendation is two parts. A, that council appoint one of its councilors as the secondary deputy chairperson of the City of Ipswich Local Disaster Management Group. And B, that council appoint one of its councilors as the deputy chairperson of the City of Ipswich Local Recovery and Resilience Group. Does any member of committee wish to ask questions of the appropriate council officer?
Well, I was going to ask Chair if I could, um, make that this, that, ask you, indulge you, but, um, that the council appoint, um, yourself, councillor Milligan, as, as the secondary deputy chairperson of the City of Ipswich Local Disaster Management Group and also yourself as the deputy chairperson of the City of Ipswich Local Recovery and Resilience Group, since we have to put a name up in, in that motion.
Thank you Mayor, uh, I'll. Thank you councillor Fekner. I will accept that.
Are we in discussion?
Uh, no, it depends, uh, i- if, uh, any member of committee wishes to speak to the, uh, ask questions of council officer? You may be right. No? Uh, so we have a mover and a Secunda. I'll open the matter for discussion. Councillor Kunsman?
Um, I just would like to give my wholehearted support to your appointment as the, uh, secondary deputy chairperson of the Local Disaster Management Group and as deputy chairperson of the Local Recovery and Resilience Group. And I speak as the deputy chair of, I guess the first deputy chair of the Local Disaster Management Group and the Chair of the Local Recovery and Resilience Group and look forward to working with you. Um, this has become, um, a necessity based on the potential for one of us to be ill um, or have a broken hand or something. And that, um, we would need the, um, continued leadership during a time of a disaster. And so I applaud the may, thanks.
Thank you councillor Kunsman. Any other member wish to? Mayor?
Uh, thank you. Yes, I think also, um, we're in an unusual situation. We came into this council when it was in technically, it is legally state of disaster because of COVID. So it's probably the longest an LGMG and, and the coordinators have been running ever in, in the history of, of this council. So I welcome you on board as part of that redundancy and that support to, uh, to councillor Kunsman and myself and the rest of the community.
Thank you Mayor. I, I'd just like to add, I, I most certainly also, uh, look forward to, um, working closely with yourself Mayor and councillor Kunsman in, in your roles and, uh, within, uh, emergency management sustainability, uh, within the organisation. I have some background, um, myself in, uh, uh, long-term membership of, uh, State Emergency Service and Rural Fire Service. So, uh, it is something that has in my life, uh, been a passion. And, uh, I, I most certainly look forward to, uh, being involved, uh, where I, uh, am needed, uh, particularly as a backstop. Any other member wish to speak? No? Then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Carried unanimously. Now we have no notices of motion, there are no matters arising. Therefore I'll close the meeting at one sixteen PM.